Last chance, anybody else? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any comments from the council?
Well...
Ms. Brenner.
Just a couple of things that are very frustrating for me. One of them is, apparently, we don't have a lot of choices about who goes to the jail. That really bothers me. And according to the presentation today, the different municipalities have their own rules for what's a misdemeanor and who gets put in the jail because of it. And it's not a legislative issue, except it's their legislative issue. So whatever we do, I think we do need to work with the municipalities to talk about some changes in who gets put in jail. I did not realize until recently how tied our hands are about certain kinds of offenses that we have no say about it. The other thing is, I really, I think that, I loved that person who said she doesn't want this to be divisive, the jail or alternatives, and that's exactly how I feel. And I think we can work on both at the same time, and I don't think it's gonna stall anything at all. But I'm gonna tell you, right now, tonight, if it makes somebody unhappy, I'm sorry, but I feel like a primary election is not the election that gets most people to get engaged and look at what's going on. General elections do that. And I really feel, you know, we're talking about three months difference, but if it makes a difference in people understanding the issues and voting in a more educated way, one way or the other, I think that's very important. And I'm not gonna support an August election, but I am gonna support the one for November, to put it in the hands of the public, with us being, you know, having some of our issues addressed too, which I don't see one precludes the other at all.
Right. Mr. Buchanan.
I just wanna take the opportunity to thank the public for all the valuable information that we've received tonight. I think it's just, Carl said it best, I think, at the beginning of the meeting, that this is democracy at its best. So again, thank you, my hat's off to you all, for coming out tonight and giving us your ideas and your heartfelt thoughts. Thank you very much.
Ms. Sadoo.
I want to echo the same what Barry has said, that it's very important to hear from you. Ultimately, you are the drivers, you're gonna pay for it for next 30 years. And second thing, I want to recognize that we, as a community, are very fortunate to have Mr. Lowes and Mr. Elfo as leaders in their respective jobs. This is not an easy thing to take on and drive it. And the biggest takeaway, I don't wanna take a lot of time, it's already very late, the biggest takeaway for me tonight is, let this not be a divisive issue in our community. We need everything, and all the comments given by people are from their heart, from their passion, and is needed in our community. So let's not use these issues to pick and choose, or be for, be against. I think we can collectively find a solution to all these issues which have been raised. Thank you.
All right. I just wanted to thank everybody also for coming out this evening. We heard a lot of good things, I jotted down a lot of stuff. One of the things I know, after being, this is my 10th year on the council, is we have a lot of smart people that work for this county, whether it's the county executive, the sheriff, Wendy Jones that runs the jail, our health department doing lots of good programs already. I truly believe that we can walk and chew gum at the same time.
That's good.
And we heard lots of heartfelt and encouraging stuff started this afternoon. I think we saw a path forward for being able to do two things at once. And we heard lots of good examples of that, you know, people from lots of organizations, Peace Health standing up and kind of echoing that, kind of encouraged that. And I don't think this needs to be divisive at all, I think we can do two things at once. And in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna be putting our nose to the grindstone and trying to figure that out. Executive Lowes.
Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I too would like to thank the community for coming out tonight and giving us your thoughts as it relates to the new correctional facility and the possibility of paralleling additional diversion programs within the community. I'd like to say one thing is, is there's a tremendous amount of documentation on the executives' website, the health department's website, and through the council and through the sheriff's office. So I encourage you to poke around on our new website to find that. Also, if you have any direct questions that you'd like to direct to my office, please give me an email. We'll do the best job that we can of answering that in light of everything that we have going on, but it's very important that we communicate and articulate as clearly as possible what we're planning to do. And I'd also like to say, as thanks to the council for the work session this afternoon. Chairman, we're looking forward to working with you, the executives' office, the sheriff's office, to develop a resolution that would commit Wachem County to fast-track the additional programs that we may deem necessary over the next years to augment those things. Council, you do have in the packet of the nine documents I gave you this afternoon, a draft resolution that I think may be a start to that, but thank you for the offer of working on that. And we too are gonna be working proactively over the next weeks and months to give, hopefully give the opportunity to the voters to say yes or no as to the direction of building a new correctional facility or not. So again, thanks so much, community.
All right, thank you. I think we're gonna take about a 10-minute recess. I know I need about a three-minute recess at least, so, and not allow people that don't wanna stay for our open session, which we haven't even had yet, to exit the building. So we'll be back at about a quarter after 10:00. All right, we're gonna get back to order here. The next thing on our agenda is the open session, which is where anybody can come up and talk to us about anything, other than the jail, which we just heard about, so.
NGPT.
So I'm gonna open the open session, and you may start. It's the same rules, three minutes, you'll get a warning at 30 seconds, and give us your name.
My name's Rick Keeney, I'm a Wachem County resident, and I definitely don't wanna take more than three minutes. I sat through this, just for this one opportunity, I didn't realize the jail was on the issue tonight, I should've looked at the agenda more. Anyway, my reason for coming tonight is twofold. First is, you are the spokesman and our voice in our government, and therefore held to a higher standard than others in our community. And so when I look at that, I think, so it must be reminded of that. Recently, an event occurred that doesn't occur often, that of a council member being retiring before their term is up, and a replacement is chosen. I have no problem with how that process goes, because it is as it should be. But it is deplorable that a city member of the council, or the council maybe even as a whole, publicly ask one person not to run for that office. I think that's something that has been out in the news media, and actually talked about.
Who is it?
That bothers me. I'll tell you why it bothers me, it's not transparent government, and I don't think it's the proper use of your public official's position. So I think that's something that I was very shocked at. I understand your selection process, I think it's a process we have to do, it's done in every other part of the government, but saying, or even asking, a person not to run is something I don't think is reasonable. And in fact, I won't say what I actually have on here, but I think it's something you need to reconsider how you discuss your business. Okay? But I have another point, and this is probably the bigger one.
Okay.
Turning now to a different subject, the council's anti-business stance. I've lived here for 42 years, I worked in large industry for almost all of that in that time, and most of the time, we and the big industry, and I know Red Brown, he had his own business, you don't get the respect from being a business owner, whether it's large or small, from the government in terms of try to help when they wanna do some projects. I realize there's a lot of things that need to be done. However, I don't think the council has set an image as a whole that says, "We welcome business in Wachem County."
30 seconds, please.
I've said this to other members, I've talked to business leaders around our community, and they agree with what I say. I would like all of you to consider, who pays for government? It's not the government, it's the private sector. Without the private sector, government does not exist, because taxes are what puts you all and keeps our government functioning. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no idea who he's talking about on the council, but if it's me, I never asked anybody not to run. I said I would only run for somebody who does not run, period.
You can look in the public newspaper, you can find it out.
Look, the paper said in my speech...
Good evening. My name is Wendy Zopp, my last name is spelled C-Z-O-P-P. I'm a Bellingham resident, I'm a volunteer organizer for Represent Wachem County, a local chapter of the National Represent Us campaign, and we are working to pass anti-corruption legislation at all levels of our government. I came alone to our last, to your last meeting here two weeks ago, but tonight, I was joined by over 20 members, volunteers from the local Represent Wachem County group. Not all of them could wait three hours and 20 minutes, a number of them have waited, and I'm really grateful. I'll send you a picture tomorrow of the rest of us out front before the meeting with our big sign. So we came as a group today because tomorrow was Representation Day, a nationality of action for our movement. As we stop to pay our taxes, it's a good time to also stop and ask if we, the average citizens, are being adequately represented by our government, or whether we are being taxed to pay for a system that disproportionately represents the moneyed private interests. To me, the answer is the latter, and it's unacceptable. So we're here to ask for you to pass a resolution calling for anti-corruption legislation. The corruption problem is complex, but what it boils down to is a system of legalized bribery. Political candidates are dependent on the super wealthy elite to fund their campaigns and to provide lucrative lobbying jobs after their time in public service. Members of Congress spend 40 to 70 percent of their time fundraising for the next election. We allow unlimited secret contributions via super PACs, and there's poor enforcement of the minimal ethics regulations that are currently in place. This systemic corruption is blocking progress on most of the important issues of our time. This is true whether you are to the left or the right on the political spectrum. That's the bad news. The good news is that it doesn't have to be like this. We can have more fair and balanced representation by our elected officials. We can stop the bribery by prohibiting politicians from accepting contributions from the interests that they regulate. We can require politicians to recuse themselves from decisions affecting their donors. We can ban job offers as bribes. We can stop politicians from negotiating jobs while in office, and once they leave, bar them from all lobbying activity for five years. We can strengthen the ban on political contributions from government contractors, to include contractor lobbyists and PACs. We can limit the amount that lobbyists and their clients can contribute to campaigns. We can require full transparency of all political money. We can prohibit fundraising during politicians' regular working hours.
30 seconds, please.
We can build up the influence of voters by providing a tax rebate to be applied to the candidates of their choice. We can strengthen enforcement of these ethics and lobbying reforms. These are some of the main provisions of the American Anti-Corruption Act, which is model legislation that can be used as a basis for city, county, state, and federal laws. Please meet with me so that we can work out the details of a resolution calling for anti-corruption legislation like this. My contact information is in that cover letter I sent you, and also on the postcard that I just gave her. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Keith Frederickson, and I'm here to support Wendy Zopp and her proposal for this anti-corruption measure. It's vitally important to our democracy and how we choose our elected officials at all levels of government, from the national situation right down to local elections. The money flooding into our election systems since the 2010 Citizens United decision has just overwhelmed and totally changed our electoral system, and it's trickling down to the local level, too, and as you're probably well aware of, the amount of money that it takes to get into office even here is increasing, I'm sure. And I'm also speaking to you as a volunteer for, as an activist who has been trying to get an initiative on the statewide ballot to overturn Citizens United and reverse their, what I consider their horrible decision of equating money with speech, which gives people who have a whole lot of money a bigger voice, and cuts little people like me out of the electoral process and out of the public process. It's a, this is a public process, elections, to elect public officials, to do our county, city business, is a public process, and should be, ultimately should be paid for by public funds, really. There's, tomorrow's income tax day, and there's long been a checkoff box where you can indicate that you want $3 to go to public funding for presidential elections. And it's kind of a drop in the bucket, but it's an important statement that we can make to kind of counterbalance the private money that's flooding into our elections. In fact, I just learned today that, on the news, that when that was first instituted, that public funding for campaigns, for presidential campaigns, about, over 27 percent of people checked that box. And as of 2013, that rate has gone down to 6 percent. And in my activism, in my signature gathering efforts, I've talked with people who, I've talked with, of course, voters, who I look for...
30 seconds, please.
But I've talked with a lot of people who just have given up on voting, and that the decline in that checkoff box is another indication that people have just lost faith in their elected process, in the process that we use to elect public officials. So I urge you to consider on the local level, because we need to work on this here in Wachem County, and on the state and federal levels, too, so every level of government, I really wanna urge you to take that into serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rhonda Lurch, and I live in Everson, Washington, 116 Aspen Drive. I'm here right now, at this moment, to ask you to pass the resolution that Wendy Zopp has put before you to get on board with the Anti-Corruption Act. And I think what she's asked you to do is to pass a resolution recommending that the state folks and federal folks sign onto this, but I think, Ms. Brenner, if I understand correctly, you actually added a little amendment that it would apply to all of you, which I think is very good. I think that's in fact plenty to do, to say that you, as county council, are not going to accept any kind of inappropriate funds at all, and you're gonna be very transparent about what you do. Having said that, I did not tell you that I am one of those people who will fund the new jail. I'm a taxpayer. And I heard enough testimony to make me wonder, I'm worried about privatization of jails, and it is going on in our country, and it sounds like there is a little bit of it creeping in here, with the extortion fees for bail and paying a machine, someone's running that machine, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm not, I'm gonna find out more, I'll do my research, thanks for the amount of time that we'll have, and if it turns out, you know, it's obviously this DLR is a cartel, is a private industry, someone, I mean, probably, we probably had some good people up at the college who would have done this consultation for minimal, but they won't apparently build the jail, but one of their cronies probably will, and the food, and this, that, and the other things, so. And our sales tax is very regressive, adding more to it is onerous for us old retired people. Thank you.
Thank you. We listened to three hours about the jail, so we were hoping we were gonna hear other topics.
Hi, my name is Jenny Bowfield, and I'm here with Wendy tonight to talk about the Anti-Corruption Act that she once passed. And I was over last night at the meeting across the way, and I heard all this sentiment, all this anger that people had about money in pockets, and I believe that this issue affects and is destructive to all of us, including politicians, because people are starting to check out. They don't have trust in the system. And from all of your faces, looking at your faces, I know you from pamphlets that arrive in my mail, and I can tell you, I had a stack this big, I started collecting them after a couple of weeks, and I started thinking about how much money all those cost, and how exhausting it would be to campaign and to try to finance your campaigns to run. And seeing you tonight in front of all these people with all the considerations on the jail, I was so impressed, just with your ability to listen to all of that tonight. And I think that it's a disservice to our political system that we have this, all this money coming in because people are losing trust, and I think that we can do better than that. So I ask you to look at that Anti-Corruption Act, it's very doable, and they did it in Tallahassee, and they could do it in Bellingham, too, we could do it in Bellingham. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
My name is Joy, and I'm not gonna speak about that. What I'm going to speak about is that I really appreciate the work that the county council has to do to keep up with the issues that you guys are empowered with. I was, I think you guys need salary increases, I think you guys need more assistance, I think you guys need more help. I think that one of the issues that is going to come before the Charter Review Commission is that I believe our constitution is not being administered properly in Wachem County. And I think we're way, way, way out of balance in the executive branch, and I think that's really skewing problems, which is causing many other kinds of issues that are showing up, that are symptomatic. It's, we've got a systems problem, we've got problems that have, we've inherited over 200 years of constantly passing laws, no one ever takes them away, so we continue to keep trying to pass laws. And so we end up with imbalances in our system that cause failures. It never occurred to me, when I left politics back in the 70s, that I would ever step into this game. I never, ever wanted to touch it again. And to end up being here, fighting for taxpayers' voices, is really nothing I ever, ever, ever expected to speak for. I have no idea what this anti-corruption thing is. I don't think most people, 98 percent of the people in our world, do not ever intend to break laws or do anything that's wrong. We end up in situations, and we end up letting things go, and we end up making decisions to the best of our capacity at the time that we have with the information we have. I think that one of the most powerful things we need to do in America today, and in Wachem County especially right now, we have major, major world-changing issues in front of us, from the coal terminal, to the port issues, to the jail issue, oops, I wasn't supposed to talk about that, those are, but these are many issues. And you guys are courageous human beings to stand up here and take all the flak that you have to take, and I want you to have more power. I want you to get your voice back and be able to stand up and say, "What is the best thing for the citizens?", and to work in tandem with an executive branch that works, to work in tandem with the judicial branch that works, and to straighten out the way that we conduct business in Wachem County. So I just thank you very much for your time, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you for referring us as being human beings. I appreciate that. Thank you. And I mean that.
Karen Steen, Bellingham, I'll be really short and simple, I think. I wanted to speak in support of the Anti-Corruption Act also, and to just let you know that I did some research into this, there's some really, the website is really quite focused and useful, that would be the anticorruptionact.org. The act was actually written, research developed by world-class lawyers, community leaders, politicians from the full political spectrum. This is not a partisan proposal, it's in everyone's interest, and it's now been adopted by somewhere just under 100, I think, jurisdictions at different levels, applicable to every level of elected government. And again, let's be a leader on this, and let's be one of the first 100 to take on to adopt this Anti-Corruption Act. Thank you.
Thank you. You just wanted to get your face on your own camera, didn't you?
So, thank you. Thanks. Yeah, my name is Lynn Barton, I'm a resident here in Bellingham. I've been a citizen of Wachem County for 22 years in August. And I just wanted to mention to you, for 20 years, I have basically been at almost every single one of these meetings. And I just wanted to give you an opportunity to recognize that the energy that you saw here with regard to the jail public hearing is a type of energy that I think you guys have been missing since the change in the open comment period has changed in your evening. There have been so many opportunities in the past where groups have approached you and have been able to speak to all of you, to this particular council, Diaz, that I have not seen happen since you have changed, made the decision to not have the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. I think you're really missing something. You're missing the face-to-face opportunity of groups and people to speak with you because it fits in their schedule. And I understand that it's all about monetary, it's all about budget constraints, it's about department heads not being paid overtime to have to wait until the public comment period is over, because sometimes it would go so long, but you're really missing something. You're really, you know, you guys are saying it's democracy in action, right? Well, I really haven't seen it face-to-face for quite a while, and I've talked to a couple of you about it here and there, and I just really felt compelled that tonight, I really have to point it out to you, that this is the type of energy that this room is missing, and it's because of a change in policy and a change in process. And I really urge you, really urge you, to reconsider bringing it back. And if that means maybe putting, sorry, department heads, I'm gonna say this, though, putting them on salaries...
30 seconds, please.
...where they're required to be here anyway, and not have it be because it's overtime, then change it. But, you know, it's just, anyway, that's all I have to say. So thank you, and I think you guys do a great job, I really do, I respect each and every one of you, as well as the department heads and people that work with this county. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Brown?
Can I just ask you, you said 20 years, when was your anniversary?
Lynn Barton again. This started in, well, actually it had pre-existed before me in terms of you guys being this, being taped and put on local television through public access television when we used to have it, which we don't any, well, I guess we do on Sunday nights now supposedly. But anyway, to answer your question, I started in August of 94 as a volunteer.
Well, happy 20th anniversary.
Well, thank you so much. And I enjoy it, but anyway, but time moves on.
And thank you for your comment.
Ms. Brenner?
Yeah, it was my understanding, and we screwed up tonight, that we were, especially when we knew there was gonna be a hearing that was gonna take quite a bit of time, that we had that option of putting open session before the hearings. And I didn't even think of it, but I think...
I think we probably have the option of rearranging the agenda at every meeting if we want.
Yeah, and I admit, I'm one of them who screwed up, I didn't even think of it, but yeah, this would've been... But yeah, this would have been a night to definitely have open session first. But maybe we should talk about, put it on the agenda to discuss it about redoing it the way we used to do it. I liked it that way just fine and I'm, I think it would be a good idea to consider it.
All right. Anybody else during open session? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the open session and we're going to move on to our consent agenda from Finance.
Mr. Chair, the Watcom County Finance Committee met this afternoon and we considered items one through seven on the consent agenda. These are all moved for approval. The first five were three to zero and the last two were two with one abstention in each case. These are, items are all approved and I so move approval.
All right. So we have the whole consent agenda. I'd like to pull number seven. Is there any other?
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Number seven?
Yes. So unless there's others, we're going to, okay, we're going to, we have a motion to approve that ones through six. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Those pass unanimously. Number seven. Want to move that one again, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move item seven, request approval to amend the contract between Watcom County and Van Ness Feldman LLC for outside legal representation in the amount of $10,000 for a total amended contract amount of $150,000.
And I asked that one to be pulled just because I've never voted for it yet and I'm not going to start this evening, so I didn't want it part of the package. And I don't think we need to go into it at this point in time, but I just wanted to be able to vote no.
Nothing if not consistent.
Yes. So we have that one in front of us. Ms. Brenner?
Well, I'm going to be consistent and vote yes.
Okay.
So since we're all saying what we're going to do before we do it.
Okay. All right. So number seven's been moved. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. So that passes six to one with Wymer opposed. Other items from-
I thought you brought it up because you were opposed.
No, that was me.
Oh, you. Okay.
Other items from Finance?
The next item was an ordinance authorizing amendment number two to ordinance 2014-11 establishing the Dakota Creek Bridge number 500 project fund and budget. This item was approved by the committee three to zero and I so move.
All right. We have that motion in front of us. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Brenner?
Can we put that after item number three? Because I want to support it. And we, it was recommended that we go with item number three. So if we did that, I could just go ahead and vote for it.
I'm not sure I understand, but I don't have any objection to moving that one to the end of this list?
And I will do whatever you need me to do in order to accommodate.
Okay. Let's move on to number two and we're going to hold on to number one.
No, two also.
Oh, we're going to hold on to both of those?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move to number three and then we'll come back.
Mr. Chair, the committee met and discussed two ordinances, potential ordinances. One was described as the council member proposal. The other was described as an executive proposal and both were the ordinance amending the Watcom County Code 3.08 purchasing system. The committee met and decided to hear and vote on the first version, the council member proposal, which passed three to zero and I so move. Oh, and sorry, there's an amended version of that in the packet, which is this one.
Great. And I think we amended the limits in that one section. So we're voting on the orange version. All right. So we have that motion in front of us. Any discussion?
Just for the record, the changes were to, on item M, it was, we struck out $10,000 and changed it to $20,000 for professional services and $50,000 for bids.
All right. Any other discussion? I guess we're ready for roll call.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes. Great. That passes unanimously. Now back to number one.
Mr. Chair, number one again was the ordinance authorizing amendment number two to ordinance 2014-11 establishing the Dakota Creek Bridge number 500 project fund and budget. This was approved three to zero and I so move.
All right. So we have that motion in front of us. Ms. Brenner?
I just want to explain myself. I'll make it real quick. Project-based funds, before we adopted what we just adopted, don't, didn't come back to us for the contracts. Now they do. So that's why I can support it, because I wanted the contracts to be able to come to the council as they should.
All right. You want me to point out the faultiness of your thinking or should we just move on and vote?
You can just move on, but my faultiness, we just made, we made, we agree, actually.
There's an old saying in the legislature, if you have the votes, vote. I think we should vote.
Okay.
All right. So we have the motion in front of us. Mr. Mann?
So we're on the Dakota Creek Bridge still, right?
Yes.
Okay. I am not going to support this one. I didn't support it a long time ago when it came through. I thought it was an unnecessary expenditure and I'll just stay consistent and vote no on this as well.
All right. Ms. Brenner?
I don't remember why you didn't think it-
Because bridges are expensive.
Well, I know, but there's safety. You didn't think it was, you're an engineer, you didn't-
Bridges are expensive. I wasn't, I wasn't moved by the status of that bridge to expend $4 million.
All right. So we have the motion in front of us. Any other discussion? I guess we're ready for the roll call.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
No.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
So that passes six to one with Mr. Mann opposed.
Mr. Chair, the next item was an ordinance authorizing amendment number one to ordinance number 2014-012 establishing the Slater Road Intersections in Offroad and Ferndale Road, CRP number 910003 project budget. This item was discussed in the committee and was voted on three to zero and I so move for approval.
All right. We have the motion in front of us. Any discussion? Seeing none, we're ready for the roll call.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the next item was ordinance amending the 2015 Watcom County budget, fourth request in the amount of $1,444,000. This item also was reviewed and was approved three to zero by the committee and I so move for approval.
All right. We have the budget amendment in front of us. Any discussion? I guess we're ready for the roll call.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Let's see.
It's the end of mine.
Committee of the whole, consideration of settlement agreement related to the growth management hearings board case number 11-2-0010C. Is there a motion?
I'll so move.
Ms. Brenner has moved to approve the agreement. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Executive appointments, a request confirmation of the county executive's appointments to the Northwest Senior Services Board. Is there a motion to confirm?
I'll move to confirm.
All right. Ms. Brenner has moved to confirm. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven to zero. We are on to approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Some of them, I think we may have started before some people were on the council. We do these one at a time?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the first one is an ordinance repealing the 1994 Eliza Island Plan and amending provisions to the Watcom County Comprehensive Plan and zoning code related, relating to the plan. And that's the lime green version. Is there a motion?
I'll so move.
All right. Ms. Brenner has moved that for approval. Any discussion? Ready for the roll call?
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. The next one is an ordinance repealing the 1991 South Fork Valley Subarea Plan and amending provisions in the Watcom County Comprehensive Plan relating to subarea plans, also in the lime green version. Is there a motion?
Somebody else.
Mr. Brown has moved approval. Any discussion? We are ready for the roll call.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes. That passes unanimously. The next one is an ordinance repealing the 1982 Lake Watcom Subarea Plan and amending provisions to the Watcom County Comprehensive Plan relating to subarea plans, still in the lime green version.
Move approval.
Mr. Buchanan has moved approval. Any discussion? Ready for the roll call?
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Now it's an ordinance amending the Watcom County Code Title 20 and the Comprehensive Plan regarding surface mine permitting, the mineral resource lands designation process and mineral resource lands designation criteria, also in the lime green version.
I'll move approval.
Ms. Brenner has moved approval. Any discussion? Ready for the roll call?
Pete Cremmon?
Yes.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Now we need to do a concurrent vote on all four of these amendments. So we're voting to concurrently approve all four of them. Is there a motion?
Move.
Mr. Cremmon makes the motion to concurrently vote for all four amendments. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's have the roll call.
Ken Mann?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sidoo?
Yes.
Carl Wymer?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Pete Cremmon?
Absolutely.
Passes unanimously.
I still don't know why we have to do it twice.
I had a whole bunch of questions from Mark Personius on those, but since he wasn't here.
Yeah, right.
Um, introduction items. We have three introduction items. Does anybody want to move to introduce them?
Move acceptance.
Mr. Buchanan moves to accept the introduction items. Any discussion?
Just for the record, Carl, there's the one item, number two, that's listed as an ordinance.
So a resolution and not an ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. That's what we're voting on. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven to zero. Okay. Let's do other committee reports. Was there anything else on natural resources?
Yes, a long time ago in a committee meeting far away, we had a presentation this morning on the Lake Watcom work plan. And it was mainly a precursor to what we can expect at our April 22 joint council meeting where we went over the, you know, the different options and the funding and basically the work plan for the next five years. So we'll be hearing a lot more next week at our joint council meeting at the Bellingham City Council chambers at 6:30 on the 22nd.
Ms. Brenner?
But we're supposed to get that information well ahead of time.
Yeah, it's supposed to be coming by email the next couple of days.
Yes. I just want to make sure it does.
All right. Anything from Finance else?
Nothing.
Okay. Public Works?
Yes, we, oh God, that was a long time ago. What was that? There was one thing we actually did, we voted on. Why didn't that come up tonight?
Benet Road.
The-
No parking.
No, yeah, no parking. I guess we, for some reason, we don't need to do that tonight. We gave recommendation. And I guess that comes back to us and then we do a final one on the, when it's ready for primetime. I don't remember why it's not on here at night. But anyway, the count, there are some things that go through Public Works Committee that are just recommendations to the Public Works people and don't come back to us right away. But anyway, there was another thing, too. We talked about the-
Ferry report. The ferry report.
Oh, the ferry report, right. We have a ferry report in here and there's a, it's kind of interesting because while we saw that we're getting better returns, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's moving in that direction. And they don't know if this past year was an anomaly or we can count on it in the future, which is going to make the decision kind of difficult if we can't count on trends any which way. And that was part of the recommendation because the Life Act Group, I think it was the Life Act Group, the Lummy Island Ferry Advisory Committee, had made some recommendations and we haven't had those come before us yet. So we're, stay tuned. Is that okay?
Absolutely. Done.
Okay. Then they, it's late. It's really late. The, the other discussion we brought up, and you guys all got information about it, was about the issue of Roundup and we're waiting to get an EPA report to find out if the EPA thinks it's carcinogenic or not. And we're, there's a lot of information out there and it's not definitive enough, so, but we are supposed to get that EPA report within the next month, I think. but we are supposed to get that EPA report within the next month, I think. So.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
All right. And Ms. Brown, will you make a note to check with Joe Ratan about that ordinance? Because I thought we introduced it at the last one about the parking on Bennett Road.
Well, we might have.
Okay. But it was on a previous meeting, and we moved it to a committee, so I thought-
It's supposed to come back to the council at some point. Do we have to have a hearing?
I would think-
Because there's a proposed ordinance there, but it-
We do have, we are having a hearing on the 28th.
Okay, good, all right.
Okay, anything in, there wasn't anything in planning today, but was there anything to report out?
No, sir, nothing to report.
The one other business that I had, and you're going to have to help talk me through this, Dana, is we wanted to make a decision this evening. Dana has thrown out a scenario for how to move forward in interviewing our potential policy analyst, and I think comments were due today or yesterday, and she got a few. But I guess we need to actually vote on who, at least who's going to do those interviews. And I think in the proposal, it was the chair and one other council member, so we'd have to select another one, or we could throw the whole thing out and come up with a whole new process.
I think we should just throw the whole thing out. I like that idea.
If nobody else wants to be on the interview team, I'll do it. But if anybody else is really itching to do it, then I would happily-
I nominate council member Mann.
Then I'll do it.
All right.
Your wife will be so happy.
Yeah.
Any other nominations? Only if she applies.
Nominations? Oh, no, I think we should acclamation.
I'm not going to make another nomination. I just don't want to hurt Ken's feelings. I'm not supporting it, period, so.
We already knew that.
Okay, just to refresh anybody's memory.
All right.
So I can't, yeah.
So there was a motion to appoint Mr. Mann to the interview committee? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
You need us to endorse the whole process? Or are we good?
No, I think we're good.
All right. And it looks like early May is when the interviews would happen, and I think the last time we did this, other council members were invited to attend, they just couldn't question, ask questions?
Um.
It gets a little weird if that happens.
Yeah, I don't think that they were, I don't think they were invited.
That wouldn't be fair to the candidates, really.
They have seven, 10 people in the room.
Screaming down.
All right. Any other items or council member updates? Let's do them both. Mr. Brown.
Just a clarification of the process you just turned out. So yourself and the lone Mr. Mann will do the interviews. What's, what happens after that? Will you appoint who you select, or do you come back with a recommendation?
They'll just take our word for it, and we're good to go.
I'm in real trouble now.
Would, just a suggestion. I mean, I do think it's inappropriate to have council members besides the two designated members to, to be involved with the interview process, but I do think that it might be beneficial to have a reception with the two or three finalists and, and be, have us be able to put, you know, our opinions in to whoever, before a final decision is rendered.
I don't remember how it worked last time.
I remember how we did it.
We did, there was one more step following the interview the last time we did this. I can't remember exactly what it was, but it was, it was a public, I don't remember if it was a discussion or-
They came in one at a time.
I can't, I can't remember exactly what it was, but there was one more step where all council members were involved.
Yeah, that's what I thought I remember. All council members, maybe it was one question or one, they had to come do a presentation or something like that.
Well, that was, that was part of the interview.
That was part of the questions.
That was part of the interview, but there was one more, I don't know if we had a committee of the whole meeting, or there was one more piece to the puzzle following the interviews. So it wouldn't just be, the council wouldn't be just relying on you and Ken to make that final decision.
That would make lots of sense.
Do we need to decide on that step now?
No, no.
Okay.
Yes, at 11 o'clock at night, when you're thinking straight.
Any other items or updates? Mr. Buchanan? Mr. Mann?
I'm fine.
Just please, you guys, get ahold of Wendy about the amend thing, and I, I worked with her, and I put what I wanted on there, and I warned her, I said, you got to get other council members to look at it and decide what they want to do, because sometimes my, me doing something isn't good enough, so I was very clear with it.
Anti-corruption resolution.
Yeah, it's, I think it's a really great idea. It can't be perfect, but it's better than what's going on, so I would sure like to see the county do a resolution. And she can give you what I did, and then you guys can go from there. You can eliminate what I did or whatever you want.
All right. Mr. Cremmon?
Nothing.
Mr. Sedoo?
I had a suggestion to talk about the Bellingham subscription to Bellingham Herald. I think that we are all on the move, and reports or articles and things come out which are of interest to the council or the community. And I talked to Bellingham Herald, it costs only $5 per person per month, and we can have access to the digital version, because even if I get paper at home, you don't carry it with you all the time. And I was going to make a suggestion that we should look into that and have access to that or have some kind of subscription, as a group subscription. And maybe there are some discounts on that, but it's only $5 per person per month. But that would allow us that wherever we are, sometimes we are not in town, and things happen, and people call you.
Right.
So that's my-
You get so many clicks for free, and then all of a sudden-
I know, I do that. And you run out of those six clicks, and I can, like that, and then it says, you can't read.
Ms. Brenner.
Well, my husband says he has no problem getting in there and reading it, and I'm having the trouble with the blocking, but I'm not very high-tech, so I figured he knew what he was talking about.
I have a subscription, and I just create a little password, and I get it all online for free.
Well, what, what's the subscription?
So I wonder, we already have a subscription, don't we?
Do we have?
We do. For the hard copy.
The office has a subscription for the hard copy of the Herald.
Does that come with an online password that we could use also?
I don't know, and if, I mean, we could probably set that up, but I don't know if it's something that all seven of you can have access to. I can look into it, for sure.
All right, yeah.
Okay.
I was going to make sure it doesn't classify as a gift to public funds.
No, we, we-
We're not asking for it.
We're stealing it.
Yeah, we get newspapers.
Keep me out of it.
I'm fine, I already have a subscription.
Better do it before you pass that.
All right, we'll look into it and report back on how far we can get. I usually get through the whole month with the number of times I want to look at it, but.
But if I, if I may, Mr. Sedoo brings up an interesting question. We only subscribe to the Herald. Should we also, should we also be subscribing to the Lindman?
To the weeklys. We absolutely should be, in my opinion.
Yeah, the Ferndale, Lindman.
And their Blaine banner, or whatever it's called now, and the Point Bullion. We should get it all.
Point Roberts ones.
Yeah.
The executives office got it all. So we, there's seven of us, it'd be more cost-effective.
Well, I do it on my own for those two, and I've been leaving them here for anybody who wants to read them.
Well, I'll bring the weekly in and leave it here.
Well, that's free. You're so generous.
Yeah, I know we used to see more, but maybe they were the ones you were dropping off. I don't, I don't know.
I think so.
Stranger, many pages on the front desk.
Well, it's good to have access to those when people do call about articles.
Yeah.
I support that.
I really didn't know what they was done.
Let's look into that by what the cost would be, and I think we probably have the budget for that, and we'll just have to take it out of Pete's Travel or something.
That's, yeah.
Pete's Travel. I think Pete's Travel is the best deal we've got when he goes down to Olympia.
All right, any other, other business or reports? Seen none at 11:02, we are adjourned.